You had a fun morning?
Yeah, busy. Bunch of stuff going on. Yeah. All right, I'm gonna have to shut Priest River down for a while more. Good morning. Hey, Justin.
You bring donuts?
Do you have a coffee at that?
That's probably good.
I can't find the... It's resolution. Oh, here it is right there. It's on there.
Yes. Rodenbridge. I'll be on the alert.
Just to the commissioners. Actually, that's not a change.
All right, it is nine o'clock and it is time for regular Tuesday morning business meeting. And I will ask Pastor Ken Lawrence to lead us in the invitation.
Our Father, we thank you for this another beautiful day that you have blessed North Idaho with. And we thank you for the activities of our county and the opportunities that we have before us. We ask that you will bless today the commissioners as they make discussion and decisions concerning events for our well-being. We ask that you just guide and direct the thinking and those who will share their concerns and thoughts and hopes. We pray for your continued guidance and direction for Bonner County and for the state of Idaho. And we give you thanks in the name of our Lord Jesus. Amen.
Omen. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll go. Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of agenda as presented.
All right, I will step down from the chair and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes and we have people sign up to speak. Boy, that'll be brutal. Nobody got nothing? Want to sing a song? Okay. All right. Moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will step down from the chair and second that. Any comment? All in favor?
Doug is looking like he wants to say something.
He's concerned. I can't find anything there with a dollar.
There you go.
Worth a dollar. What's he referring to us?
I know.
Worth a dollar.
All right, motion passes. Uh, we will hear from Mr. Jim Snyder, GIS Director.
Morning, gentlemen. Couple things for you today. The first one is addressing. I have a memorandum of understanding with the city of Kootenay to provide support for them with addressing and their 911 and public safety response.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move that the county sign the memorandum of understanding with the city of Kootenay.
I'll step down from the chair and second that. We have first and second. All in favor?
You want discussion?
I want to discuss.
Anybody discussing?
Get to the gist of it. All right, motion passes.
Wait a second, I'll look at a better vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Somebody may be watching.
Now it's... Only have one cup of coffee in this one. All right, Jim again.
Yep. This one is, uh, it's staff augmentation. We're looking to do because of the boom and people coming into the area and everything, our land records workflow has doubled. We're looking at, instead of doing three or 400 parcels or deeds working through them a month, we're in the 700, 750. So we've doubled considerably. And after discussion, we just need to get caught up. So we're working with a company named Panda Consulting. We've worked with them in the past and we're asking them to provide support to us to getting all these drawn in and get our maps updated and everything. And this is, uh, it's a short-term thing and it's not to exceed $50,000 for this contract.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, based on the information for us, I move the commissioners approve the contract to work with Panda Construction for 50,000, not to exceed 50,000.
All right, I will step down from the chair and second that. Questions, discussion? We have a dub race.
Um, how long do you figure this contract is gonna take to fulfill what you need done?
It... Maybe six to nine months. Um, trying to catch up and stay caught up and get us in a better spot.
Okay, and, and the $50,000, it seems to me like an additional employee could get brought in for that kind of money. And, and seeing as how the influx of people is not likely to go away soon, I'm wondering if that wouldn't make more sense.
Do you want to answer that or do I want to?
I got it.
Okay.
No, honestly, we thought about bringing in another employee. We weren't 100% positive on how long this is gonna be. Part of this is because I've lost a couple employees and we're training. So until we get tho- those trained up, it, we need the assistance to continue to provide the service that you desire. Now, an additional employee, you can't hire an additional employee for $50,000 to do this work. Um, when you throw in benefits and all those other things, you get closer to $75,000 or so a year. Um, and that's for, at the beginning side of the scale, it can grow exponentially from there.
Obviously, I wasn't involved in this stuff for long enough. Um, could you give me those two numbers again for what it was last year versus this year?
I have to get, to get exact numbers. I'll have to go get them.
They don't need to be exact. You mentioned numbers earlier.
This month, we still have two days left in the month. We did 658 deeds through the end of day yesterday. And those are deeds where we have to make changes to a map, AS400. Um, it's all about tax parcels, home purchases, trusts, all that kind of stuff. Last year at this time, we were in August, we were in the 500 to 550 range. Um, but what we saw is this year, summer usually starts around May for this, when people start buying and transferring land. Um, this year it started in February. And instead of doing 250 to 300 deeds a month, we're doing 600 to 700 deeds a month. And that seven's gone up as high, I think our highest number is right around 760 deeds in a month. And we haven't added any employees. We've actually lost and brought on a couple of new ones, so.
And, and that number that you said you were averaging last year?
Compared with month speaking, I think we, we did a little over 6,000 deeds for the fiscal year last year. We're on track. I can't, I can't give you specific numbers.
And, and you really shouldn't be trying to give you exact numbers. I mean, if you want that information, you should get that. You know, you should just go down to his office.
I, I heard the words doubling and the numbers are coming out too close to that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um, and the, the other part of it is, is the commissioners have been really, you know, we're trying to hold a line on hiring new people because those costs never go away. It seems like once you get these people on board, I'm not sure, and we're doing a great job because I mean, there are some situations where we just have to have more people to, to try to cover the increased volume of everything that's expected of the county, planning, different, there's multiple different ones. But we're trying to, you know, just contract it out and hope that this thing settles back down.
Thank you, I think.
I would hope so.
All right.
I mean, Patterson, for the, uh, for the record, just wondering, since you'll be, gonna be doing maps and stuff already, could you, um, in the past, you had the zones for the school districts? If you could put those in?
They, I believe they're on the public facing app. I'm not positive.
No.
Not off my head.
No, they're not.
Okay.
And it's really important to know the different zones the different trustees are in. You know, if they're in your zone or not or whatever, just to use it off and on, much less at election time, so.
Something I will definitely take a look at.
Thank you.
At the end of the day, isn't it the district that holds the actual?
The district does. The district is supposed to then provide the county, the state tax commission maps.
Well, or, yeah, and, and what I'm saying is, what happened if they didn't get posted correctly or in a timely fashion? That's what I'm saying. That if you really, really want to know, you should probably go to the district itself. They are the keeper of that information.
Yes.
Um... We got access to the maps from the school board. You cannot zoom into them. You can tell the houses aren't any, they aren't on anything approaching like the GIS where you could actually tell if somebody is living on this side of the line or that side of the line, um, which is why it becomes really important to get them on some system like GIS where people actually can find out. And where the county, which is responsible to decide who votes in, in which of those districts, lives in them and who doesn't. How can they do that if they can't get accurate information? Thank you.
To answer your question, the elections office does have access to that stuff. The elections office does have access to that information. I'd, no, I've got it. I, I have never said I didn't have it. I thought it was on the public application. I will check on that. I'm not sure. But the elections office does have access to exactly what you're referring to, Doug.
Citizens need it if they're going to be able to run for school and, and know, and know they're voting in the right district. We had a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Justice Services, Mr. Ron Stoltz.
Morning Commissioners, good morning everyone. Ron Stoltz, Director of Justice Services for the record. Um, this morning I have, uh, for your consideration, a contract with Tony, Tony Kingera, um, who is a pre-a auditor. Pre is for the Prison Rape Elimination Act. We're required every three years to have our juvenile detention facility audited by a certified auditor to make sure that we're in compliance with the Prison Rape Elimination Act of 2003, I believe. And so we are due for that. We were due for it this year, but due to COVID, uh, there are some extensions that were offered. Uh, we'd had a gentleman that was gonna come, uh, this month and do the audit and he canceled on us right at the end. And so the next date that we had available was, um, or that we could get somebody else in is April 25th through April 27th to 2022. Uh, the approximate cost is gonna be $4,192. That's the fixed cost for the audit itself. And the extra additional cost will be the travel expenses that we're not gonna know how much those are until after the arrangements are made for her to travel out to do the audit. So this will be for the pre-audit for 20, fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the above described pre-a contract for FY '21 and '22 for the term of one year as approved by legal.
I'll step down from the chair and second that. Uh, any discussion? Hey.
I got a question.
You got a question?
Yeah, I was just curious. Who does, who does the audit? Is it an independent contractor or is it a government agent that does the audit?
They're, they're independent contractors.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
We should vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Road and Bridge.
Morning.
One and all.
Good morning Commissioners. Steve Platt, uh, Road and Bridge Director for the record. We have been working on trying to establish a road right of way on the Sunnyside Road. There are portions of it that are unknown and contested. This is a particular interesting one where we have what was a garage and boathouse structure actually in the roadway. And we have been working with, uh, owners of that property for an acceptable plan of replacing that building outside of the road prism and then being able to remove that structure. It's been, uh, it, it's got an interesting history because Road and Bridge at one time actually damaged the building and paid to repair it. So at that point, we were pretty well saying that road, that building, and this was 25 years ago. So we have accepted the fact the road had, the building has a right to be there. This is an amenable way between two different parties, the county and the owners, at, at a fairly reasonable cost to replace the structure with a suitable structure outside of the road prism in a place that has been deemed acceptable and, and talking with the planning department in the past. We'll handle the permits. Um, the cost of $31,374 is for the new structure, the decking that structure would go on, the electricity of moving that, uh, rewiring the structure as it is now. And we would pay for that out of the terminal funds for road safety. Getting that structure out of the road will make that a much safer road to drive on. It really cuts it down to one lane and, and a busy place. So what we're looking for is the commissioners to approve obligating the funds for fiscal '22, um, to proceed with this and, and the cost may change slightly, but they're, they're representative, the owners have been pretty cooperative in trying to find a solution.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that the commissioners approve the obligating funds from special, highway special FY '22 budget for construction costs related to relocating a storage building from the Sunnyside Road Prism for driver safety.
All right, I will step down from the chair and second that. Any discussion?
Anybody at Road and Bridge have personal friendships or relationships with these people?
No, no, these are, these owners are probably have owned that road, that, that land now for two years maybe. Um, so they're relatively new owners. They are, they actually are moving to the county, live in Spokane. Um, so I don't know that any of us have any personal knowledge, so there's nothing there that I know of at all.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think that what happens is, you know, after sitting for years trying to, to work around this and not having a lot of cooperation, then a new owner comes in and, and then they're, they're, we're able to actually make something happen, like tax dollars.
These actually are not your tax dollars. These are being funded through
Very good.
the Harp, Harp Turnbull trust funds that were given to Road and Bridge for highway improvements and road safety projects. Um, they specifically are not your tax dollars.
Say your names for the record, I guess.
Yeah, I, I'm familiar with that trust fund, but that trust fund, um, is used to, part of the reasons why we haven't expanded the dollars going to Road and Bridge is because that helps our Road and Bridge Department. So when you use them, it's not used someplace else. That's all.
I, I will not argue with that one, Doug.
But they're very specific to these types of projects and, um, this is, in my opinion, this is a good use of it.
I thank them for doing, but that, the guy that died that did this, he did an awesome thing for the county.
Morning Patterson, for the record. So I'm just curious of the size of this little building and how much the permits will cost, uh, would have costed.
Uh, I don't, honestly, the size of the building, Marina, is roughly 12 by 20, something like, something about that size. Um, it's not very, and really, the BLP for that, uh, if I could ask Milton, what's a BLP for a storage building?
Should be zero.
Well. Yeah. So.
That's only...
It's exempt.
Yeah. 200 feet. Still though, 2,000 feet. Right now it's free.
So the other thing is, is this also clarifies the right of way. We're, we're working on making sure that with this, we clarify what the right of way is. It's a bigger project you're working towards, um...
Yes, with, with the moving of this building, we will then have an agreement with the owners that will clarify and establish it'll be in this specific area, a 35-foot right-of-way offset 16 feet on the, on the shore side of set, of the center line, 19 feet on the hillside of the center line. And we will actually have a right-of-way where at this point in time, we do not have a right-of-way.
That's probably a lot of setbacks and all of that.
Yeah.
And that's probably a lot cheaper than all the legal mumbo jumbo of vacating that little few footage and then purchasing the other footage that somebody won't sell.
Yes, all of that.
Which would open up a whole different can of worms. So it's the easiest solution, I think. So we had first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Now for our most treasured one, Cheryl Peel.
Good morning Commissioners, good morning everyone. I'm requesting to move $400 from the treasurer's account to petty cash accounts for the recorder's office, $200, and the planning department, $200. Um, they've had an increase in activity and they run out of change on a daily basis. So, um, this will help in their operations.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of County Commissioners authorize the county treasurer to transfer $400 from treasurer's account to the planning department's petty cash drawer, $200, and the recorder's petty cash drawer of $200.
I will step down from the chair and second that. Any discussions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
And the next item I have is approval of the treasurer auditor joint quarterly reports for the third quarter ending June 30th, 2021. The county cash balance at that time was $29,468,258.31. And the balance on account for EMS is $224,681.32.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept both the Bonner County and EMS treasurer auditor joint quarterly reports for the third quarter ending 6/30/21.
All right, I will step down from the chair and second that. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Quick question. Won't affect, uh, your...
He's the chair.
Was, was there any findings of, of problems by the auditor?
Um, this actually isn't the outside audit that was presented a couple months ago by our independent auditors, Hayden and Ross. We didn't have any findings.
Thank you.
Elections. Mr. Rodenbridge. No, it says Clarissa.
It says Clarissa.
The big guys.
Morning, everybody. That's right. So last week, we had a fantastic idea and we presented it before the board and they approved it. And that was to combine some of our polling places to the county fairgrounds and a couple others and a couple places to make better use of our facilities, uh, better security, uh, protocols. We got a lot of citizen input saying that they wanted us to hit pause on that plan. They wanted to, uh, talk to us about, uh, that, talk to us about placement of the polling places and all that. And we thought, you know, we had been reviewing this for so long, uh, in our elections office. Uh, and, uh, you know, we thought we had discussed every angle. And so we went ahead and approved it, but everybody in the public wasn't involved in those conversations. So we have decided to undo that. And the resolution before you is just doing that. Basically, we are moving everything back to the way it was a week ago. And everybody's polling places to those that they are familiar with as of two weeks ago, a week ago. And, uh, anyway, that's what this resolution is for. So we're hitting pause on this. We may reevaluate this when we have the census data taken into consideration for redistricting District Seven, District One, which we're gonna find out if we have to re-divide the commissioner districts. Every one of those should be equal roughly in number of, uh, registered voters. So when we, when we look at all that later on, we may look at this again, but for now, we're just gonna stay where we were. I ask your approval for that resolution, moving everything back to the way it was a week ago.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution 2021-73, which returns Bonner County polling places to where they were two weeks ago and will remain for the 2021 election year and beyond.
All right, I will step down from the chair and second that. Any discussion?
I, oh, go ahead.
Morning Patterson, for the record. Just thank you very much for reconsidering, especially with citizen input. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Yeah, and I, I had plenty of phone calls, but, you know, and we had a discussion amongst ourselves and I think this is the best way forward.
Yeah, all of them were very happy phone calls.
Well, yeah. Actually, so, actually, that, you know, they're just concerned more than anything.
Yeah.
I don't remember anybody yelling or screaming, but, um, the other thing I want to add is that, um, we've had at least a couple, one workshop, if not two workshops, explaining this to the commissioners and, and what the way forward is and what the different ideas are for moving forward into the future. So it wasn't just like that was the first time that the commissioners
That's correct.
And it was advertised, open meeting
Yep.
to, to talk about those things. So we have had more time to absorb those informations.
Than everybody else, yeah.
Than anybody, than everybody else did. So I think it's a good idea to have a larger discussion, make sure we're all on the same page.
Your turn, Steve.
Read the motion, right?
I did. And we, you seconded it, but Doug seems to have something he needs to say.
It's worked out to be an excellent way to inform the public that you're considering this. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it is. That's for sure.
It's a great...
That's for sure. Everybody's excited right now.
None of my emails seem real loud.
It was front page.
They were yelling.
Front page of the newspaper. That guy raised attention, so. I mean, it, in my opinion, it's all good. It's okay. Maybe we should have looked at it a little closer.
Motion at first. End up, Carrie Jackson.
Hi. Um, my question is, uh, how long is this, uh, pause? What, what's the duration of the pause? Can that be stated?
Yeah, the duration of the pause is, it's permanent. If we look at it in the future, we'll bring something up then, but there is no sunset to this pause built into this. Uh, we are planning on just pausing or stopping it. We're keeping the polling places where they were. We may look at it again in the future, but, uh, as of right now, there's no design specifically to do that at a certain date.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Don't be nervous.
We're good.
So, next we have a, uh, resolution to be presented. Brought forward by me. Do I read it? You read it?
Yeah, I think you should probably read it.
Reader read it. You want me to read it?
I would say that's appropriate.
Okay.
Commissioner, may I ask Steve Platt for the record, do resolutions call, require a roll call?
Not all resolutions.
I, I thought Jesse was directing, but I had that question.
Uh, this is a resolution stating the people of county are entitled to the protection of their God-given and constitutionally protected rights and the responsibility, duty, and privileges of the commissioners to do everything in their lawful power to protect defendants. defend, and secure these rights. And it would make Bonner County a constitutional county. Uh, you want me to read the resolution?
Well, and, and maybe, I don't know, maybe you go ahead and
Just read it.
Read that and then I'm going to ask you to summarize what, what, what the purpose is and what we're trying to accomplish here. If you read the motion, then I'll second it.
Okay. I don't have to step down to do that.
Nope.
Okay. Uh, based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution 21-74 presented by Commissioner Redchow.
And I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Oh, there'd be plenty, but I, first of all, I think that what I want you to do is, is kind of explain what it is, what it is you're trying to accomplish by doing that, because we all stand up there and we take our oath of office and it says that we will uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state of Idaho. So all the things that are listed in here, other than the, the area where you're attacking the current governor, which seems political to me, um, especially being where you're sitting, um, probably taking on the current governor. Um, it just seems like this is a repeat of what we've already said we would do and that I do every day.
It, yeah, it reinforces the oath that we've taken that, that seems like pretty much nationwide has been abandoned by the elected officials, uh, at all levels and is reassuring the people of Bonner County that we will maintain our commitment to follow these and stay within the rule of law that has been established by the founding fathers and by the Constitution of the state of Idaho. And I, I feel like it's the right thing to do. It's not a political move. It's just something that I think should be done.
Okay, so I guess, you know, I've read this several times and I'm just trying to say, okay, wh- what part of this, you know, do I not agree with? I mean, I agree with nearly all of it except for, you know, when you call out the current governor and, um, things that are being, um, basically you're saying that we're unconstitutional, that we're done by the current governor, and I'm not sure that I'm going to step up and agree to that. If, if that's a, that's an issue for, I would say constitutional scholars and also the courts to decide. I'm not here to say that, uh, Governor Little has done some things that are unconstitutional. We may not agree with them. Um, and in, in some senses, the way I look at it is, I look at Idaho, and this is not necessarily a reflection of Governor Little, but maybe it is. Um, I look at Idaho and where it is in the, in the nation as a whole. We've got, if not the strongest economy, one of the strongest economies in the nation. Did he get it all right? I'm sure he didn't. I mean, none of us, I mean, we've all been putting these positions of power to make decisions and it, it sometimes becomes pretty difficult to make a decision and then realize, ooh, down the road, eight months looking back, maybe we shouldn't have shut the county building down, maybe we should have tried to do something different. You know, all of those things come into mind and then, you know, literally just trying to get my head wrapped around what we're trying to accomplish.
Doug Patterson for the record. Could you make it clear how this will make Bonner County different than the other counties who haven't done such a thing?
It's just a statement saying that we will state a rule of law. We will not overreach our powers. We will stay in our, in our lane and that has not been the case uh, nationwide. And so maybe a shot over the bow for all those that are elected that represent people of this country to, uh, stay in their lane and remember what their job is and not overstep, uh, their bounds and overreach powers, which is pretty evident from one end to the other.
Thank you.
Uh, if I've got something in it that is incorrect, I would love somebody to point it out.
And, and I don't think it's about correct or, or not correct. I think it's about what our, what our duties are as Commissioners and what, what we're supposed to be doing. You know, I mean, you know, it's saying that, you know, we'll never agree to a mask mandate, we'll never agree to this. I mean, at, at the end of the day, the legislators gave us the power to make that decision because Panhandle Health can make a suggestion. So when that comes, if that comes forward, if that comes before the Commissioners, then I would think that rather than have a pre decided, you know, we won't ever do that, we would listen to, or I will anyway, listen to the discussion from both sides and then I'll, I'll do my job, which is to, to vote on what it is. And then I'll be judged by the people that reside in the county, whether they like it or don't like it. And, and I mean to say that, I mean, the, the legislator gave us this power suddenly and I like that. I like that it, the Panhandle Health has to say, hey Commissioners, what do you think? You want, they can't just say, hey, we're going to do a mask mandate. So, um, and I think that's the job of the Commissioners to sit up here and say, yeah, I believe in it or I don't believe it.
Morning.
Morning Patterson for the record. I'm not sure, but hopefully everybody has heard Red Skeletons version of the, uh, Pledge of Allegiance. And so as a teacher, we said the Pledge of Allegiance every morning and yet when you stop the kids and say, what does this really mean? You, you get into a habit of just doing things automatically. And so every once in a while, you know, going back over and saying, what does this really mean, you know, is good.
Yeah, and I don't necessarily disagree with that, but that's what the, that's what you folks do to us every day as a wake-up call is like, hey, what do you, how are you looking at this and why do you not see it this way? This is what the Constitution says. This is, I mean, I get that wake-up call almost on a daily basis, so I think I'm pretty aware. So I guess my thing would be that I think it's unneeded, um, and I won't be voting for it. I mean, we can and then that leaves us in a situation because you're going to be voting yes and I'm going to be voting no. So where do we go from there? Have the odd number, yeah. And I'm, I'm, I'm all, I'm all for that.
Make that motion.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Chairman, um, instead of taking this up right now, I'm, um, saying we table this motion and tell the three Commissioners present.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes to table it. All right. We now have Jesse Webster.
You know, I, 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 I'm going to defer this to Mr. Steve Clatt because I, I don't have nearly the infinite knowledge of the Roden Bridge Department as he does.
Oh. Short interruption. Will the number of this change when it gets taken back up or will it stay the same?
The resolution number?
Yeah. So this one will become 74 instead of 75.
Good morning Commissioners. Steve Clatt, Roden Bridge Director for the record. A brief history of what this project is and what this project is not. Roden Bridge was approached several years ago about the legal status of Barnhart Road. Barnhart Road connects Huckleberry Mountain Road, which is a loop paralleling Highway 95 down in the Carywood area in the area of the Big Red Valley Vista Barn. And so we did the research on that road, found it to be a viewer's report road created as a public highway, um, in the early 1900s. And so at that point, we contacted the Barnharts, which own the northern end of Barnhart Road and the as the land adjoining the Barnhart Road. And they had a gate on that road and we talked to them about the fact that that gate, we cannot allow a gate on a public highway, public right-of-way, and the gate needed to be removed and opened up. And then as we looked at the road, the road, as it was laid out originally, ran some 10, 15, 20 feet from their front deck, right between their front deck and their garden is the public right-of-way. That public right-of-way was actually created, there was a right-of-way deed. So we suggested to the Barnharts, why don't we cooperatively work at relocating that right-of-way? You dedicate the right-of-way, you open a road up of similar quality to what's there now, which is primitive is the word that comes to mind. It's a very primitive road, unused for the most part, unmaintained for the most part. But build a road suitable and, and comparable to that road and we will, as a road department, work on the process to vacate the existing right-of-way and accept the dedication of the new right-of-way. So this is really really no more than an exchange of right-of-way. We are vacating a portion of Barnhart and Huckleberry Mountain Road, replacing it with a new section of comparable road that will be Barnhart Road. And the public will have the same rights to the public highway, public right-of-way as they do now, and then it will not be right in, uh, Barnhart's front yard. So we recommend the Commissioners approve the vacation and accept the right-of-way deeds from the Barnharts' family and trust properties and the public ends up with, uh, a continuous public right-of-way that joins Huckleberry Mountain and Barnhart Roads. Yes. Yeah, we did, there was a public hearing held on this, um, last week. Oh, so I don't have that date in front of me.
Tuesday, the 24th.
Yes. So we, with the public hearing was held and this is a, uh, decision, discussion and decision for, from that public hearing.
Okay. Entertained a motion.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution 2021-74, including the findings of fact, conclusions of law decision and order copied and attached herein to collectively as Exhibit One arising from a public hearing of the petition of the Bonner County Road and Bridge for vacation and abandonment.
All right, I will step down from the chair and second that. Discussion.
Doug Patterson for the record. First, is there any exchange of money involved in this?
There is not.
It basically ran to his house and from there it was a good skid rope.
Poor skid.
Worse than a skid trail.
Yeah.
And so what, all he's done is, is donated the piece that goes along his border.
And, and constructed the
And constructed the road.
Right.
Um, Jesse was nice enough to give me the map of this and, and it looks to not have any significant more left, right, left weaving around in there. Is there any significant elevation change? Obviously, it's ending and beginning and end in the same place for them, but the amount of up and down.
The topography is, is, as I was, the topography of the new road is very similar to, to the topography of the old road.
Thank you.
Right.
And I think this is a excellent, um, resolution to this, um, you know.
I just want to clarify the number of the reservation.
2021-74, is that what we said? Yeah, we moved it down, so we didn't use it. Since it wasn't passed and it, it, it's a running number.
Okay.
All right. We have first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes and I will adjourn this meeting at 9:43.
Recession for a few minutes.
Yeah, and then we'll go into the decorative section. Get to go to recess?
Cheryl.